Hi, in case it's not clear, the actual candidate that I'm representing today is Kierzia Parker in District B. My name is Julie Watkins and I am her campaign manager and because she couldn't be here today, I am standing in. These are her words. "I am a mom of two young children, a licensed social worker, a therapist, a small business owner, an elder at my church, and a proud graduate of Douglas County Schools. The community is my, this community is my home. I grew up here. I'm raising my family here and I'm running because I believe every child deserves a public education that gives them the tools to thrive, no matter their background, zip code, or ability. When I was a student in this district, I needed an IEP, which later turned into a 504 plan. I remember how hard it was at times to keep up and I also remember the teachers and staff who saw past the challenges. Their belief in me helped change the course of my life. Years later, I came back to DCSD not as a student, but as a school social worker. I sat across from kids who were just like me, needing support and someone in their corner. I worked alongside special education teams to write IEPs, navigate threat assessments, and advocate for students who needed a little extra care. For me, it was full circle because I knew in my bones what a difference it makes when adults truly show up for kids. That's why I'm running, to be in every child's corner. I believe our kids deserve schools that are focused on them, not on politics, not on culture wars, not on distractions, just kids. Their learning, their safety, and their ability to grow into kind, capable, thriving adults. My core values are equity and access, transparency and accountability, and student-centered decision-making. This means meeting every student where they are and giving them what they need to succeed. It would be an honor to have your support for the Douglas County School Board. Please vote for Kierzia Parker in District B. Thank you."
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but just to give a quick clarification. Just for the reminder for the introductions, before your time is up, 15 seconds before the two minutes is up, a yellow card will be raised and then when your time is up, a red card will be raised. And I will just gently interrupt you just to say, "Your time is up," as the red card is raised. Just for a clarification, please continue. I apologize.
Great. Hi, everyone. Matt Smith here. I just want to start out with a little background so you understand who I am. But tonight, this whole trip here has been worth it for the nice conversation I had with this young man, Carson, sitting right in front of me. So really appreciate you being so friendly in the introduction. I'm just a parent, a dad, of an eighth grader that goes to a charter school in Castle Rock. My background encompasses a lot of different things. I'll take you down that tour because I think it's understand, I think it's important to understand the person sitting up here. I have a background in the military, going into the United States Navy directly after high school, getting out, returning to Colorado where I went into law enforcement for eight years with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. While I was doing that, I also joined the Colorado Army National Guard. And then I decided to make a big career move into IT where I am today. I run a global consulting practice with presence in the Americas and the EMEA region, doing consulting around all sorts of things like AI and technology for some of the biggest logos here. But that part doesn't matter. What I'm most proud of is I'm also a volunteer for the Douglas County Search and Rescue Team, which I do that in my spare time. For fun, I like to jump out of airplanes, rock climb, and ride dirt bikes. So that's a bit about me. Why am I here today? I'm here today because of my son and all the other kids within the district. We need to do what's right for the kids. I've seen what happens firsthand back during COVID when parents are ignored at the board level and really the impact that the board can make on the district. That's really when I got involved and my passion got ignited. Since then, I've remained involved with the district, showing up to make my opinion heard at public comment. And now, you know, I'm taking my opportunity to represent the citizens of Douglas County on the board. I want us to focus on academic excellence. Right now, we're number one in the metro area and we need to continue that way, protecting girls' sports and their spaces, and then focusing on parental rights. Parents need to know what's going on in the classroom and have a say in their child's education. Please vote for Gamble, Kramer, Smith, and Vale this November 4th. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Keaton Gamble and I want to start by giving a little rundown of my credentials because they've been called into question like the rest of the slate as not being education-focused enough. My professional credentials as an organizational leader, aligning vision with execution, paired with the MBA are probably more applicable to this role than an education background. But more important, my credentials as a representative of the community. So my personal experience gives me a little more insight on what we might need as a district. When I was 16 years old, I was shot in Parker, Colorado after a verbal altercation that escalated to violence. That traumatic experience took my 4.0 GPA to a 2.4 upon graduation, which I barely graduated. And I couldn't have done it without the support of the teachers in the system helping me get through it. Combined with that, I understand the impact that a traumatic experience can have on a student's academic success. And it's no different than bullying in the classroom. Persistent bullying can wear a kid down just the same as being shot on the mean streets of Parker. As a result, being shot, I was put on a 504 for PTSD and the physical impairment. And that was ultimately what got me through, through to graduation. Not to say there wasn't additional things to work through. I have a child that I brought from Denver Public Schools, struggling with academic performance into Douglas County. So I have comparative experience on how the academic support structure works with other districts compared to Douglas County. And I have a child with autism in kindergarten in a Douglas County public school, as well as a middle schooler that's on an IEP. So those personal experiences, I think, are more informative of my ability to represent this community and I'm ready to do that. of my ability to represent this community, and I'm ready to do that.
Hello, everyone, I'm Tony Ryan. A little background about me. I went all 13 years of my K-12 education in the Douglas County School District. In fact, two of my teachers are in this room. Rex Corr was my theater teacher. Mr. Whitakis was my eighth grade health teacher. Sorry for dating you there. I, my wife is also a K-12 graduate. She went to Douglas County High School. I went to Castle View, so the rivalry doesn't have to last forever. After I graduated from high school, I went to the University of Denver, where I got a degree in theater, and then I taught the performing arts in both summer camp and classroom settings. And then I went on to law school at CU, and I'm now a practicing attorney. My wife and I just had our first child five weeks ago. He decided not to sleep at all last night, so if I am off, that is the reason. Keaton just let me know he paid my son off, so good on you. And he's the main reason I got into the race, because I want my son and every child in Douglas County to grow up in schools that believe in them, that invest in them, and that put them first. There are three things that I've been focused on with this campaign. The first is making sure that our district is funded and that we are using that money to support our schools, support our students, support our educators, excuse me, and our support staff as well, and make sure that we have the best educators coming into the district that we can and that we are not wasting that money settling lawsuits. Second, I want to make sure that we have robust extracurricular activities. Obviously, I have a theater background, so I'm a little biased there, but I do want to make sure that we tell the folks that are in charge of the funds to fund those programs fairly and to make sure that they are not seen as cut points to save some money. And third, I wanna make sure that our students are safe and supported in their schools, especially in light of the things that have happened recently. That means mental health supports for everybody in our schools. That means giving our children a sense of belonging and updating policies as we need to. Once again, I'm Tony Ryan. Vote for me to be on the Douglas County Board of Education. Thank you.
Hi, I'm DeeDee Kramer. I also live in Castle Pines. I am a mom of three girls who have been in school here in Douglas County. I am not from Colorado, but my husband is, and went to school in Cherry Creek. And when we moved back here a few years ago, we were looking at options for where kids could go to school, and he was so impressed with the track record that Douglas County had that we moved out here a little over two years ago. My oldest daughter just graduated from Rock Canyon and is at the business school at University of Indiana, the Kelly School, which is amazing. And she actually, when she got admitted, I think, had over 18 credits due to taking the business path at Rock Canyon. So that was a nice little jump on her education. I decided to do this because I've always been involved in my kids' school and their education, and wanna make sure, especially for my younger two, as well as the next generation of kids, that schools remain strong, accountable, and focused on preparing all kids for what comes after graduation. Education has always been a core value in my family. In the 1980s, my parents helped found a private school in San Francisco that is still thriving today. So I've seen firsthand the impact that schools can have on a community. Like my fellow candidates, I care deeply about academic excellence and parent involvement and transparency. But two things that I really wanna highlight are the CTE education, as I've seen firsthand the impact that can have personally, as well as keeping girls safe and boys out of girls' sports. I'm running 'cause I wanna preserve the values, the strength of our schools, and our community. So please vote for Gamble, Kramer, Smith, and Vale on November 4th.
Good evening. My name is Clark Callahan, and as a dad and as an educator, I know firsthand the profound impact that our schools have on our kids' lives. As a dad, I know what it's like when an advanced learner loses interest because school's no longer challenging. I also know what it's like when a learning disability goes undiagnosed for too long. I started my career in public education over 20 years ago, teaching math and business. I went on to get a master's in education and became a principal of the school that I had taught at. And then 13 years ago, my wife and I moved back home to Colorado, where I got to take on the most challenging role I've ever had in education, helping to lead the turnaround of one of the lowest-performing high schools in Denver. From those experiences, I've learned three things that really guide my practice. First, use data, not politics, to make decisions. Two, always make sure there's multiple pathways for young people to be successful, whether that's college, a trade, the military, or something entirely different. And third, be disciplined with the finances, so that all of our young people have the resources that they need to be successful and so that we can compensate our educators competitively. My name's Clark Callahan. I have over 20 years of proven results in public education, and I'd love your vote November. Thanks.
My name is Kelly Denzler. I am proud to be running to represent the Douglas County School Board for District G, which is the Chapparrel feeder. And you know, I am a big believer that we all have callings in life. For some of us, our callings are to be engaged in faith ministry or civic engagement for advocacy causes that we believe in. For some of us, our callings are to take care of our family and friends or to enrich our communities through our creative pursuits. And for me, my calling was teaching. And I could talk to you about my calling and those nine years I spent in the high school classroom, that one year I spent in the administrator's office, which was a terrible fit for me. I could talk to you about the credentials that I still keep active, that professional teaching license endorsing me to teach in six different content areas in this state, and that Master of Education in Education Leadership I earned and the principal license that goes with it. I could tell you about mentoring alternative licensure candidates through their induction programs. And I could tell you about, in 2019, creating one of the alternative graduation options for the 2021 menu rewrite. I could tell you about being an adjunct professor and having my mother audit my class. We tried to keep it under wraps until she called me sweetie one day. It didn't work very well. And I could tell you about teaching through a global pandemic with a two-month-old. I could tell you about burning out at the end of year 10 and making the heartbreaking decision to walk away from my calling. And at the end of that, I hope you would understand the gravity with which I say, "We all have callings in life, and education is mine." And that's why I'm here. I have a son who just started in this district. Teddy is a kindergartner at Prairie Crossing Elementary. I care so deeply that he and the 61,000 students in this school district have the best education that we can offer them. I care so deeply that teachers make it past year 10, like I couldn't. I care so deeply about maintaining our district's excellence while also improving the things where there are opportunities to grow. Thank you.
I obviously don't do this as a profession. To be clear, I am also not Steve Vale. He is overseas at the moment with a family wedding, and he will be back shortly. But these are his words. "Steve Vale is proud to call Douglas County home. As a native of this great state, he's had the privilege of living in Parker since 1999. He and his wife Donna chose this area for its great schools, access to outdoor activities, and community engagement. Steve is a corporate IT executive, leading some of the most innovative and respective teams in the industry. He's also a proud Air Force veteran. He's been married to his wife of 31 years and is the father of two beautiful daughters that both successfully graduated from Chapparrel High School. All this has created a deeply personal stake in the issues facing our communities today. It is his commitment to community values, his two girls, and his Christian faith that drive his sense of service and passion for ensuring every child has access to the best possible education and opportunities. Steve and his fellow common sense slate are committed to core principles that they believe are fundamental to our children's future. Academic excellence, because every student deserves a world-class education and life skills that prepares them for success. He wants to continue all of the great work that the current conservative board and superintendent have started. Second, protecting girls' sports, ensuring fair competition and equal opportunity for female athletes. He will work with state and local leaders to do everything possible with an existing law to stand up for our female students. And third, defending parental rights and school choice, because parents should have the primary voice in their children's education and the freedom to choose the learning environment that best serves their family's needs. Steve's faith and experience in the military taught him the value of duty, honor, and service to others. His 30 years of experience in corporate leadership has honed his ability to build coalitions and drive real results. But it's his role as a father that motivates him the most to fight for the values and policies that will create a brighter future for our children." Thank you.
Alright, let's give it up for these wonderful candidates. Alright, perfect. Now that we've, the candidates have introduced themselves here, I'm just gonna get down to business here, and kind of go over the procedural things that we'll be going over in this candidate today, just to give you a basic outline of what's gonna happen. First off, for the responses to the questions, each candidate is given about 60 to 90 seconds per question. Again, a yellow flag will be raised 15 seconds before that to signify that 15 seconds remains, and that a red flag will be raised when your time is up. And I will whisper like this, "Your time is up." And gently remind you that time is up. With the question order, we are doing this by pairs, and how we will do it is by district. So District B will be pair one, District D will be pair two, and so on. And how we will do this is that at the beginning of question one, District B will start with their answer to the question. So for instance, Mr. Smith will begin with question one when we start questioning here shortly, and we'll go down to Mr. Denzler, or Ms. Denzler, I apologize. Additionally, after each questioning period, there will be a rebuttal, and my colleague will go over that right now.
So the rebuttal period will open, as each candidate will have a choice to rebut a given response. It will follow the question order. For example, pair number one, Mrs. Watkins and Mr. Smith, will get the chance to rebut, and it will go down until all the candidates have been given a chance to respond. A candidate does not have to give a rebuttal, but is given the opportunity to. And again, the yellow card will be raised 15 seconds before the time is up, and a red one will be raised when it is completed. And we will calmly interrupt you to finish your statements.
Just for re-clarification for the questioning period, after the first questioning period starts, then pair number two in District D will begin with question number two. Additionally, we have to talk about respect and giving people their due diligence at questions. You guys are all adults, and I'm aware of that. I'm not questioning your integrity, but tonight, I please ask of you that we respect each and every candidate, give them their due diligence with answering questions. And please, no sharp political jabs. I know you guys won't do that, but again, just to re-clarify. Also, those who have a proxy, if not already said before, will only be able to give the introduction and conclusion statements. And also, at 8:00 sharp, we do have to be out of here and on our way to the tables outside. We are on a tight schedule here with Legacy Campus, but they've given us a gracious time period of until about 9:00. So after, at about 7:40 is when we will conclude questioning, and we will go to our conclusion statements. And then at 8:00, we will file out, and you guys will get to meet our wonderful candidates, and you'll get to read their literature and whatever else they want to provide. With that being said, I think we'll start the questioning period here. Before we begin, is there any clarifying questions that I can add, candidates, that you guys need help with at all? Before we get started? None, none at all? You can also probably ask questions throughout if you need help with clarification of the order, and I will be happy to answer. We will start then with question number one, with Mr. Smith here. And for the first question, it is, "What do you see as the top three priorities for the board right now?"
Okay, great, I'm gonna stand, I'll feel more comfortable. The top three priorities for the board right now are to continuing building on the successes. Right now, we're number one in the metro area when it comes to testing scores, 92% graduation rate. Recent surveys show things are going really well amongst the teachers, the students, and the staff. So our philosophy is we wanna continue everything that's working right. We don't wanna come in making major changes. Things are going really well in the district. That's number one, no major changes. Number two, we wanna make sure parents have a voice in their child's education and that they know what's going on in the classroom. That's gonna be a very important thing, because parents have the right to dictate their children's values, their children's beliefs, and have that stuff reinforced. And school should not be a place where parents are being surprised by some of the things that their children are being exposed to. They should be aware of that and consent and opt-in to some of those, you know, things that are happening in the school. And then last but not least, we do wanna prevent things that are happening around the country, like protecting girls' sports and their spaces. We wanna make sure that we're taking a very proactive approach to that here in Douglas County, and that we are protecting students and, you know, especially vulnerable, you know, females and their sports and their spaces. This also includes physical safety, making sure that students are safe inside of their classrooms and that all of our facilities are protected. Thank you.
Alright, so in no particular order, parents as partners should continue to be a priority. It's already good in my personal experience. I've had great relationships with all my kids' teachers. But creating and maintaining a culture from the top down of seeing parents as the first partner in their child's education and going to them with everyday needs and helping them facilitate learning at home. So we got, we're getting education on both sides. And that leads into the other priority, which would be academic excellence. You may have heard, we have the top scores in the Denver metro area on testing. We can't rest on our laurels, so we will continue continuous process improvement to get those numbers higher and higher by rigorous data analysis and incorporating teacher feedback into how they believe we can improve those scores further. 73% of staff feel their schools meet the academic needs of all their students, so we need to figure out what the other 27% think we could do to improve upon that. And lastly, is safe and orderly classrooms, which is also a factor in academic excellence. So we clear discipline codes, strict consequences for bullying, and supporting teachers' authority in the classroom.
So I see the top three priorities for the board, at least if I was elected, is, I do think we have some issues with mental health in our district. We have a 300-to-1 student-to-counselor ratio in our schools. That caseload is untenable, I know, because I carry half that caseload and can barely function some days. We need to make sure that we are also making our school spaces a sense of belonging for kids, because nearly a third of our middle school and high school kids are saying that they feel like they don't belong in school. That in itself is a security issue, because when you feel like you are part of a community, the chances that you are going to act against that community are greatly diminished. And that was reinforced last Tuesday when our district had a presentation on safety in the district, and the head of our mental health discussed just that topic. Second, we need to look at the funding for our district. We do depend on some money from the federal level, and it seems like a lot of the education money that has been passed by Congress is turning into block grants. So we will need to look to grant writing as a source of funding for our district. And then we need to make sure that the money that we do have is in classrooms. We spent nearly a million dollars settling a lawsuit recently. We need to make sure that we are not doing that going forward and instead are using the funds to support our students and our teachers. And third, we need to restore trust in our board. We have had too many times, our board president sets something on the agenda on Friday and vote on it on Tuesday. That does not give community input. That does not allow parent choice. It is going over our voters and making sure that they don't have a place...
Your time is up.
Can you hear me? Okay, the top three priorities for me would be academic excellence. Like Matt said, we are number one in the metro district and have a 92% graduation rate. Our test scores, our CMAS scores have all improved dramatically in all subjects, which is huge. And we have lowered the achievement gap. Secondly, I wanna continue to attract and retain great teachers. Obviously, they are our biggest asset, and without good teachers, our kids aren't gonna get the education that they need. Teachers are coming back to Douglas County, and applications for teachers here have gone way up, which is a huge testament to the education that kids are getting. Lastly, safety, both physical safety and mental health. It is imperative that no kid feels unsafe when they go to school. There are things within our control and things... Um, there are things within our control and things without our, with, not in our control. Um, and the district, I know, has done everything in their power and will continue to improve upon, um, the resources with SROs and local law enforcement. But also, it's important that teachers and kids know how to take care of their mental health.
So fortunately, the, the three, uh, priorities that I feel like the, the district needs to focus on align with my three priorities as a candidate. Um, first, I think we need to continue to make decisions based on data and not politics. And that means making sure that we don't get rid of key pieces of data and only focus on the positive pieces. At a recent board meeting, we got rid of effectively the Healthy Kids Survey, which points out some critical areas as a district that we need to focus on. The second area is making sure that we always ensure that there are multiple pathways for young people to be successful. This makes me think of my son Lincoln, who as a nine-year-old came home from school with tears running down his face and said, "Dad, I hate school." And I remember when things started to click for him. It's when we found a school that allowed him to go to an aviation school one day a week. And all of a sudden, school became more interesting, relevant, and real. And finally, we need to be disciplined with the finances so that all of our young people have the resources they need to be successful, and so that we can compensate our educators competitively. Which means that we have to keep dollars in classrooms and out of courtrooms.
Oh, wait, I think it's already on. All right, likewise, I think that, um, or likewise, I'm saying, similarly to some of my, uh, fellow candidates, I am very passionate about teacher recruitment and retention. There are highly qualified teachers who live in this district who cannot afford to work here. The starting salary in Douglas County is fifty-one thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. That comes out to twenty-four ninety-six per hour. You can make more as a manager at Costco. That is unacceptable for one of the most affluent districts in the metro area. I want our teachers to feel cared for. I want them to feel respected. I want to restore trust between the teachers and our community members because I think that trust has been greatly eroded over the past few years. So teacher ret- retention and recruitment is something I'm very passionate about. I'm also passionate about ensuring equal access to education for all of our students. I want all of our students, regardless of their backgrounds, their zip codes, how much money their parents have, their religious beliefs, their identities, who they love, to feel like they have a place at school and to have access to the entire range of academic activities, both in and outside of the classroom. Finally, I personally am very interested in how artificial intelligence is going to be transforming education as we move forward. I want our students to be tech literate and prepared to work in the industries of tomorrow while maintaining their critical thinking skills, while being exposed to productive struggle, while understanding ethical use of AI and not just asking ChatGPT to write an essay for them in forty seconds. So I think that we have a lot of collaboration to do around that. That's something I'm interested in.
All right, then, so that concludes our first questioning period. We will now move on to rebuttals. Just to re clarify, we will stick with the same order as the questions. So District B with Mr. Smith. We'll start with his rebuttal if he chooses to. Keep in mind that if you do not have a rebuttal, you do not have to rebut. Um, with that being said, Mr. Smith can start us off with rebuttals. The floor is open.
I'll never turn down an opportunity to talk. Um, so, yeah. I have really nothing direct, uh, as, as part of a rebuttal here. But I think one theme I noticed, you know, just going down the line and, and hearing all the different candidates, is that there's different stake group, you know, stakeholder groups being represented here. Um, you know, the folks that are part of the common sense side are, are, are representing, you know, parental rights and, and making sure that students are represented. But also, you know, we can't forget about taxpayers and the rest of the community because all of these things that were just mentioned around teacher raises and, and things of that nature require tax increases. And, and so I'll remind everyone that in twenty twenty-three, there was an MLO passed that did just that. And, and so it made the teacher pay much more competitive in this district. And we are losing less and less teachers to neighboring district, districts, even ones that pay more because of, of, you know, different things going on in those districts. I'm not gonna district bash here. But that's one thing to keep in mind. It's just the different stakeholder groups that we're representing here. Also, um, you'll hear a lot of parental rights from the common sense side of the house, and, and I think that's gonna be an important stake group because, again, parents have the right to dictate their child's education, and we need to make sure that is foundational. And then that we make things easy to find, we make things easy to opt, opt in or opt out of, whichever, um, is appropriate in, in that given case. But things need to be easy for parents to navigate, and parents need to know what's going on in their child's classroom. Thank you.
I don't really have a rebut, but more agreement with Clark about keeping politics out of, uh, the classrooms and decision-making. We're looking for results. You can't use politics as a parameter. You have to make data, data-driven decisions to succeed, and that's what we'll do. So I'm not, I don't know if we're really contrasting two polit- policy positions with that statement, but I think we're totally aligned on using data to get outcomes.
I'll just say to Clark's point, and thank you, Keaton, for saying that the data is important. Uh, when he says that we did away with the Healthy, uh, Kids Survey, we, we did not. We, we have access to it, but now it is an opt-in, uh, for parents, which on paper sounds good. It sounds like great that you, that you get to say whether or not your kid participates. But in practice, we've seen in El Paso County, after they passed the exact same thing, uh, we lost all of the data. Because adding things to parents' plates usually means it just doesn't get done, unfortunately. Um, and so that is what happened with our survey. We no longer have access to that information. That is information that was useful for our district. It is the number that I just cited for nearly a third of our middle school and high schoolers feel like they don't belong at school. That's where that comes from. We don't have a corollary in the current, uh, version of the survey that we have in our district. However, I am at least hopeful, uh, by what Director Williams said in that we do have a survey that we are crafting in the district, and hopefully, we can use that survey as a way to get at the data that we are losing from the Healthy Kids Survey. Thank you.
I was just actually gonna say the same, that we didn't get rid of the Healthy Kids Survey. It's just an opt-in, which I, as a parent, think that that's great because I've missed so many surveys or the opportunity to know what my kids were doing because it was opt-out, and I missed an email. So I feel like giving parents a choice to opt-in will make them more engaged and, um, have to participate in their kids' education.
So we've, we're talking about a lot of, using a lot of kind of code or education speak. So this idea of opt-in and opt-out, right? So there was this survey that all students across the state of Colorado take. It's called the Healthy Kids, uh, Survey. And the, what the board did, what, what the, the way that it currently existed was that you opted, um, you could opt out of the survey if you didn't wanna take it. Okay, everybody had that choice. But what changed a couple weeks ago is that we, the, the board made the decision to, you have to opt into that survey. And what everybody knew when they voted was that when you make that move, the data goes down to zero. And the district no longer has the data to then be able to respond to students' needs from. One of the directors made a, a, a great, uh, compromise during the, uh, open, uh, the open comment that we could simply put the, the policy in the paperwork that parents get at the beginning of the year to make sure that nobody missed the, the, uh, opportunity to opt-in. And it was ignored because everybody had decided how they were going to vote. Matt, I wanna address something that, that you said. You know, the MLOs were passed, and it brought critical funding to our district. And you're on record as not supporting that. And so it's important that when we talk about bringing resources into the district, there is a group of folks up here who are gonna listen to the school district, listen to the superintendent when they say, "We need more resources," and respond to that. I'm representing all of the constitu- all of the constituencies here in Douglas County, not just some.
Um, I wanna address the, again, the, the tax issue, so the MLO and the bonds. Um, look, we have one billion dollars in outstanding capital needs. We have two hundred and fifty million dollars in outstanding tier-one needs. Those are needs which are necessary in order to occupy a building and comply with federal, state, and local regulations. Tier-one includes things like roofing. It includes things like plumbing and infrastructure, HVAC, major structural movement, fire irrigation systems, and more. So yes, we passed a bond, and we're gonna be able to open some new schools. We're gonna be able to make some repairs, especially to Sierra Middle School, which is on well water and has sewage issues almost every year. But the Board of Education in this district spent years not asking taxpayers for bonds or mill levy overrides. We are so far behind that the progress we've been able to make isn't nearly enough. And so I'm sorry, it's not sufficient to say that you, you, um, res- respect taxpayers so much that you're not going to bring any bonds or MLOs to them. That is leadership malpractice. It is unacceptable. And frankly, I think that, um, to say that you're fiscally responsible without understanding that you have buildings to maintain and people to pay is childish. Show me the money tree in the backyard of Wilcox. Show me the printing press in the basement. It doesn't exist. Douglas County residents value transparency, and so transparently, I will ask you to pass an MLO or a bond. And you can reject that if you want. But this is what is necessary, and you know what? We are all adults. We are clear-eyed about the needs of this district. And because of that, it is irresponsible to say, "We're done. We're good here."
All right, what a great first round of questions here. We're just gonna go on and commence to our second round of questions as my colleague will tell you more about it.
All right, so now beginning responses for question two. Uh, just a reminder, we will start with Mr. Gamble, and we will end with Mr. Smith. All right, how do you envision DCSD's curriculum transforming in the future with new arising opportunities such as the utilization of AI in the classroom and financial literacy classes?
I think the curriculum will have to transform to support AI literacy, education, uh, teaching students how to interact with AI appropriately, AI governance, making sure it's used as a tool to advance learning, not, uh, to cheat. I mean, I just completed my MBA at the end of last year, and I used AI a lot, but it was a good research tool. I never wrote a paper with it. There's checks and balances in place, even if you were so inclined that the school district couldn't play to prevent cheating through AI. Um, I actually just finished training the first hundred employees at my company to receive access to company AI, um, on responsible use, um, as well as data protection to keep our industry secrets. And the marketplace is rife with opportunities for AI employment. And as the district, we need to make sure we're on the cutting edge of our CTE program, making sure we're always monitoring for new opportunities to bring in experts in the field to keep, get our students prepared for life in the real world. Um, I, I can attest, AI is full of opportunity. I just started a new job within my own company as the head of, uh, automation and digital transformation, all thanks to AI. So I think it's important that we continue to develop that and use it as a tool to, um, expand our CTE program, always evolving. And then, yes, financial literacy should be a requirement for graduation.
As for the financial literacy piece, I was lucky enough to take a financial literacy class when I was here in the district. It was one of the most useful classes that I have ever taken. Uh, and I'm glad that our state, uh, recently passed something adding that to our social studies curriculum statewide, and it is something that should be taught in all the schools going forward. As far as AI is concerned, uh, it's a tool that I think we need to stop shying away from. We need to make sure that our kids know how to use it ethically because it's going to be used. We cannot pretend that this is not something that is already in all of our classrooms, is already being utilized by all of our kids. We need to make sure that they are using it in a way that is ethical and is, uh, allows them to continue to think critically. It should not replace, uh, their own ability to write papers. It should not replace their own ability to craft, uh, arguments. Uh, but it can be a tool to enhance that. Um, obviously, I'm, I'm an attorney, and I don't know if anybody's keeping up with law news. You shouldn't. It's boring. Uh, but a lot of lawyers are getting fined across the country because they are using AI in a way that they are citing cases that do not exist because AI does make things up. And if you don't go back and check those things and then turn in, uh, something to a judge, you are going to get sanctioned for it. Um, and so, starting with our kids, being able to identify when they are using AI for research, making sure that that research is correct and that you can back it up with something else. Um, I think in April, uh, some of our students talked to that. I would recommend going back and listening to the presentations from, from the students to the district on just this point.
Your time is up.
We are committed to making sure that our kids are ready for the future, whatever that looks like. If it's through AI, financial literacy, or things we probably can't even imagine yet. Seventy percent of the workforce in Douglas County are returning students, so it is key that they are prepared for whatever path they take and ready for the real world. Um, like everyone else has said, I do believe AI is a tool, and it's not going away, and that children of all ages need to learn how to use it responsibly. That goes without saying that they need to be able to critical think and do their research on their own because it is not perfect, um, but it's out there and they will be using it. Um, for financial literacy, I think that would be an amazing skill for all graduates to have. I've seen my own daughter struggle, even though she was a business major, with managing her allowance at school and to know how to budget properly, how to save properly, um, how you could go into debt. If you don't do that, um, would be a great skill for all high school students to have going into the real world.
I would say absolutely agree with a, a lot that's been said on artificial intelligence. I wanna talk a little bit about the financial literacy. As someone who's taught financial literacy, this is something that is really, really important to me. I think we are, uh, we're, we're doing a, a better job of, of having it taught at the high school level. Uh, what I think we need to do is, is introduce financial literacy concepts sooner in middle school. Uh, we have, uh, an incredible opportunity for our young people to take advantage of in high school. Uh, we're in this amazing campus, uh, that off, that offers a, a ton of really, uh, great opportunities, and our middle school students need to know about them. And so as part of financial literacy, they need to know how to optimize their high school experience and start thinking about the opportunity that they have to take CTE classes in high school, to take concurrent enrollment classes in high school. One of the biggest barriers to post-secondary opportunities is that college and trade schools often cost too much and take too much time. If we prepare our middle school students to start thinking about high school before they get there, they'll have a better opportunity to optimize that time and lower the cost, uh, of, uh, post-secondary, uh, opportunities because they will have participated in those in high school. Thanks.
Uh, so like Tony said, fortunately, financial literacy was adopted as a discipline within the Colorado State Academic Standards for Social Studies. We now have financial literacy standards from preschool where they learn about money and the value of money and what is it, what is used for, all the way through grade twelve, where they actually, the standard is, is pretty interesting. It's about, um, financial risk management strategies, which, again, would have been very helpful, uh, when I was growing up. Um, I do wanna talk about AI. I do wanna level set briefly, though. Um, this question is, you know, how do you envision the, the curriculum transforming? I do wanna make it clear that the Board of Education does not drive the ship when it turn, in terms of transforming curricula. Um, the Board of Education approves curricula that the faculty suggests or recommends, um, but we do not determine what the curriculum is going to be. That's set at the state level. Um, for AI, you know, I was in the classroom when ChatGPT was, uh, released in the fall of twenty twenty-two, and I remember we were at a department meeting, and we were thinking like, oh, my gosh, like, world language is now obsolete because you can just ask ChatGPT to write your homework for you. Um, and I think that AI, as we move forward, is going to be transforming, um, the way, the ways in which we educate. For example, in world language, maybe I'm not having my students, um, you know, go home and write out sentences because they might just use ChatGPT. Maybe I'm having them go and actually converse with ChatGPT and prompt engineer it. Maybe I'm having them go and actually converse with ChatGPT and prompt engineer it to converse with them as a native speaker, using slang, making sure that they understand different dialects or social contexts, and then provide them with immediate gentle feedback.
All right, this is one of my favorite topics. So I come from West Virginia, from a family with not a lot of means, and so I learned every financial lesson the hard way. You know how I learned about interest? I bought a TV from Best Buy on one of those great no payments for 24 months plans. They're only great if you pay them off in time. If not, you learn very quickly about interest. So I think financial literacy classes are critical, you know, to empowering folks to be successful in their future, understanding retirement, understanding purchasing a home, understanding basic things that are going to happen that, so you don't have to learn the hard way. My son, for example, every penny he's ever gotten at birthdays and Christmas and everything goes into a custodial brokerage account. He doesn't like me for it at the time, but he will one day, I promise you. When it comes to AI, if you don't use AI, you're not going to work for me or people like me out in the workforce. We're using it every single day for, in so many different ways, and trying to find new ways to use it. We also do a lot of work with big corporations that are trying to figure out how to use AI within their company, so I don't want to shy away from it. It is important, though, that you understand the foundational things beneath it because, for lack of a better term, you have to be able to call BS on it because it will give you some of that, and you have to know, you have to be able to fact-check it, and you have to be able to go back and correct it. You cannot blindly trust it. So if you don't know the underlying skills for the problem it's trying to solve, you won't have that ability to do that. So I totally agree with AI coming into the classroom. I think it's critical that students are taught AI from a very young age. Thank you.
We will now begin our rebuttal period, beginning with Mr. Gamble and concluding with Mr. Smith.
I agree. I don't think there's much to disagree on. I think all of us are saying basically the same thing. We agree that this is stuff that needs to be taught in schools. I'll just go further and say, professional development for our teachers is definitely an avenue that we need. We need to have our teachers and all of our educators involved in this booming AI and how it can help them, lesson planning, how it can make sure that they're involved in exactly how this is changing, the things that are coming down the line with it, because it's one of the most rapidly growing technologies that we've ever seen. It grows itself, and that's probably why, but we need to make sure that our teachers are on the front line and they have the opportunity to take further classes on this as well.
Okay, I believe that concludes our rebuttal period. Has every candidate had a chance to rebut?
Again, I never turned down an opportunity to talk. I, too, have been on the record, you know, for this subject, AI, inside of board meetings, and I've been on the record for a lot of things inside of board meetings because I'm the only candidate, you know, that's attended board meetings and given public comment over the years. So you have about four to five years of public comment where you can figure out where I stand on things like AI, as well as a bunch of other things. And I am very direct, and you will always know where I'm coming from. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our second round of questioning and rebuttals. We will begin with question number three as we start with District E with Mrs. Kramer. We will start with question three as it reads, "How will you measure your own success as a board member, and how do you plan to ensure the Board of Education remains a healthy place?"
Two of the ways I plan to measure it is by our continued success that the district has had. Like you've heard, we are number one in the metro area for school districts. Our CMES scores have gone up, so maintaining that spot within Colorado and even improving on it would be one way. The second way is making sure that the teachers and staff are happy. According to the recent survey, about 79% of teachers and staff feel like their ideas and suggestions are listened to, and that 78% feel like the district is headed, excuse me, in the right direction, and we want to continue to build on that momentum and continue to attract, retain the great teachers that we have.
My success on the board will be measured by the success of every single one of the young people in our district, not just some. I will listen more than I talk and pass up the opportunity to talk when I can listen. My opinions will be formed by the feedback that I get from the young people and the educators and our broader community here in Douglas County. I won't be afraid to go places and talk to people and listen to people who have opinions that I know are different than my own. I will disagree and have healthy debates if on the board. I believe in shared leadership, and I know what it's like to work on a team effectively. I am unaffiliated, independent, and my allegiance belongs to the young people of Douglas County and the educators that serve them. Thank you.
I feel that my success would really depend on seeing improvements in the data around student belonging, inclusion, inclusion and feelings of safety. I really want to see some improvement there. I also think that my success would be, you know, having healthy dialogue and potentially disagreement with the other members of the board. I think that's one of the most disappointing aspects of the current board majority, in my opinion, is that they've overread their mandate. There seems to be this feeling that they can make unilateral decisions and just sort of outvote the three minority candidate or board directors without much thought, really, to the fact that there is a diversity of opinion on the Board of Education. We did not just elect four people in the board majority. We elected seven people to have healthy disagreements and dialogues. And so I think that that's where I'm the most disappointed, especially as a former educator, who would like to see some healthy debate, and that's something that I always, you know, told my students, was that we can engage in civil discourse and we can be, you know, critical of ideas and not people. And I think that that's what is really missing. So for me, I think that a healthy place means that you can invite all voices to the table. You can understand that you might be elected, but you represent everyone, including the people that disagree with you, and you should have a seat at the table for them as well.
Awesome. So measuring success, we have to have data, but this is going to be about our students' learning, our students' progressing, our students' at grade level, our students graduating with the skills that they need to move on to whatever they choose to do in life, whether that be college, whether that be a career, whether that be the military, et cetera, et cetera. That's going to be the success metric, our students' learning in a safe environment. And then a healthy board, I, too, agree that a healthy board does not mean that we all have to agree all the time, but there needs to be space for healthy debate. Actually, I would argue that a healthy board would not agree all the time, and a healthy board should have a wide array of backgrounds, disciplines, and experience represented on there because the goal of a board is to represent the community. The goal of the board is not to represent one subset of the community, and so I think that is going to be a marker of a healthy board. And then also, making yourself available to folks to listen and to hear them out, even if you do not agree with them, I think is so important. So making sure that public comment is respected, making sure that, that me personally, I would take the time to go out and meet with folks, as I do now, knowing that they do not agree with me. Thank you.
I would measure my success as a board member against the success of the policies that we set as a collaborative team and going through the process of setting policy by analyzing, is this in the interest of all of the stakeholders? If not, is it the best option for what we have in front of us and making the right decisions to yield the best results, aligning the outcomes with, sorry, aligning our policy goals with means that are attainable by the superintendent and staff to actually achieve, rather than, sometimes, goals can be set that are harder to define, they're more idealistic and things that we would like to see, but we can't possibly conceive of a way to get to those means, or get to those ends, we just put it on the administration to do it. Without that step between, how does this get done? At least the starting level, there's a good chance it won't be accomplished, which would be a failure of the policymaking body. So check our success on the numbers. And then, yeah, maintaining the healthy board by coming to those decisions, if not unanimously with majority approval, with all stakeholders in mind, and with an analysis and comprehensive output, if you will, from the process where we determine the policy that can back up why we made the decisions, everything that was weighed and make that publicly available.
So I'm very lucky in my job. I get to represent folks that I disagree with wholeheartedly on many different issues. I walk into the courtroom, and I'm often disliked by every single person in that room, the judge, the prosecutor, the person sitting next to me who I am representing. But I am able to put my personal feelings aside and represent that person as best as I can. I want to bring that into this district. I have my own personal feelings on things that will likely come before the board, but I'm not going to be using that to make my decisions. My decisions will be based on experts coming in and talking to us about the issues that are before the board and turning to the community and allowing enough time for the community to tell us what the best course of action is for their students. I think a healthy board is one, as everybody else said, is able to disagree, is able to disagree publicly and set a standard for everybody in our community for how we have the conversations about the things that we disagree on. We need to stop setting things on a Friday, I'll go back to this, and then voting them on a Tuesday because what that does is it gets rid of that dialogue, it gets rid of community input, it makes it so that we have a board that is making decisions based on their own personal beliefs and not based on their constituents. Thank you.
Wonderful round of responses from our candidates, and we will then commence on to the third round of rebuttals. We will follow the same order as before as Mr. Gamble will start. Apologies, Mrs. Kramer will start, and then Mr. Ryan will end the rebuttal period. Thank you.
Pass.
All right, thank you. We will move on to question four, which is...
All right, we will then commence with question four. The order will start with District G with Ms. Denzler, and then we will end with Mr. Callahan answering questions. Question four will be, "What are your ideas to improve security in schools while addressing student concerns surrounding security?"
Thank you for the question. I was honored to attend part of the youth congress today, and I was really struck by the fact that students were talking in very nuanced terms about the looming sort of cellphone policy that the state has mandated all districts come up with. And one of the sort of through lines in the comments that the students had about cellphone policies was the very real concern that any potential cellphone ban would be a security risk. They feel as though having their cellphones is incredibly important. It gives them a sense of safety should the worst happen. They're able to contact the outside world, their parents, potentially emergency services. And I thought that was really striking that our young people are so cognizant of what makes them feel safe. So that is definitely part of it. I think that anybody who watched our security forum a few weeks ago knows that we have the most SROs in the, I think in the state, actually, and I would love to expand that into some of our elementary schools, but that will be contingent upon passing another bond. I think that the Safety and Security Council needs more student voices. I think like today, when I was able to attend the youth congress, our students have a lot of really great ideas, and I think that involving them and bringing them into the Safety and Security Council would bring a really unique perspective. We have some incredible folks in this district. Our Director of Safety and Security is second to none, and I think that we can make his life easier by freeing up more funding from the voters.
Great question. I'll start with the security aspect and then kind of move on from there. I know firsthand what it's like to be minutes away from a call in a patrol car, and, you know, that's still too much time. So it is great that in Douglas County, we have world-class security. We have world-class partnerships with our local law enforcement leaders, and we would need to continue that. I feel like we have a great SRO program here, especially, obviously, in our middle schools and our high schools, shared SROs at the elementary school level, but things are working really well in Douglas County. However, pure safety, it's just not a reality. So a bad actor and, you know, the right means and the right methodology, they're going to be able to, you know, cause harm no matter if we had 100 SROs stationed at every school. And so I think part of that's going to be a multi-phased approach where we focus on the physical security, but then we also focus on the needs of the children, especially around bullying. I think there's some common themes in some of these unfortunate incidents that happen around the country, and we need to take the time to analyze the data and get true concerns. I can only guess about the student concerns. I'm guessing it involves not wanting to be overpoliced while in school, but I'm going to go ahead and roll with that assumption. I'm also on the record on this topic at the school board and gave a lot of feedback on this one when they tried to pass a security policy, and I really defended students' rights. So I do think that's important. I do not believe in criminalizing children unnecessarily, but at the same time, if somebody's disruptive, bullying, assaultive, we need to deal with that and remove them from the classroom.
Yes, I agree. I get the sense most people in this room are pretty up to date on Douglas County school policy, but our SROs and our security system and our partnerships with the various police departments and the Douglas County Sheriff's Department are world-class. The system they've put together makes me feel good and hopefully other parents feel like their kids are as safe as they can be in a public school here in Douglas County. But you can never stop improving. You can always get better, so maintaining continuous improvement processes within that three-pronged approach that we take of prevention, hardening, and response. Like I said, I got shot. That really was a traumatic experience, and I want to mitigate that as much as possible for all students, and that would include, like I said, bullying. I think getting persistently bullied is just as harmful as someone trying to murder you if it's the psychological effects of constant torture. So we need to prevent that with more strict anti-bullying policies, meaning taking care of the children that are the victims first. We want to treat everybody with respect, but we can't afford to diminish the quality of education for a large group because of the actions of a small or one or two bad apples. We'll still take care of the bullies compassionately, but we need to make sure we're protecting the victims first, and then communicating post-incident with privacy limits to prevent rumors.
So I touched on this in my opening. I think we do very well with physical security, as is backed by everybody that has spoken so far. Mental health is a piece that I think we need to focus on as a board. We can improve. We can improve. We have metrics that we can give to the superintendent to say, here's what improvement looks like. We can give specific numbers of, we want this reduced by 5%, for example. That's on the mental health piece. I would also turn to, and now my tired brain is kicking in because the second half of the answer is no longer there. I do, oh, safety also comes in the form of making sure that our kids feel comfortable reporting when they have bullying issues and discrimination issues. Our students gave a presentation, like I said, back in April, and this was one of them that they reported on, and they talked about the fact that Safe to Tell does not feel like a way that they would want to report. It is not a way, it is not set up in a way that is conducive to them and conducive to their own feelings about how they are being bullied and how they want the responses to be. So we need to change our bullying and discrimination policies to make it easier for kids to feel comfortable reporting when they are having those issues, and it also protects our schools if we have clearer policies that our schools should follow. If they fall into the procedure that we have outlined, that provides protection for the teachers, for the administrators, when they follow that policy. Thank you.
I'll obviously echo what they have said in terms of our world-class security and the SROs and partnering with law enforcement. I think it is equally important that kids know that they are the first line of defense, so to speak, and they're the ones amongst other kids during the day that will notice when somebody's acting weird or, you know, unusual behavior. And so, helping them realize that they are empowered to tell a teacher, tell a counselor, use Safe to Tell, which is anonymous, and my girls have said that actually they know people that have used it, and a lot, you know, has come from it, so they do feel like that is a good tool. I also believe that it's very important to teach the kids to be resilient and empower them to work through their feelings. them to work through their feelings so that they, you know, obviously there are real cases of bullying, but there's other cases where kids need to learn to stand up for themselves and reduce their own stressors in their life. And one of that way could be through limited cellphone use, especially at school. Tons of kids go home and spend the afternoon on their phones, which adds to bullying in the afternoon or drama. Having three girls, I know that they could see where their friends are. If they're not invited, then it causes angst among them. So I think that on the student side as well as having teachers have the resources and training.
I think the first step in keeping our kids safe is to listen to them. Our SAG gave a really informative presentation at the April Board Meeting and three things really stood out to me. They talked about reducing bullying by creating more consistency across our district and making sure that there's a tiered system of accountability when that bullying occurs. They talked about improving our mental health supports through a peer counseling model and gave several examples of schools that have put that in place and the successes there. They talked about focusing on transportation safety and adding more crossing guards at critical points and specifically in some of our parking lots. Unfortunately, over the past two years, we've had young people killed on their way to school or on their way home. So I think the first step is by listening to our students. I also think that the data is really, really important. The Healthy Kids Survey told us how many kids are addicted to drugs and alcohol. It told us how many kids have experienced a sexual assault and that information is critical to be able to respond appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, so all of the candidates have answered the question, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. We're going to get on to our fourth round of rebuttals now. It is going to follow the same order, beginning with Mrs. Denzler and ending with Mr. Callahan. Thank you.
I just want to take this moment to express some gratitude. I know that working on the bullying issue is so important to myself, to Clark, to Tony, and to Kyrizia, and I am just so encouraged by our opposition's dedication to reducing bullying, especially since one of our most targeted groups is transgender students. I'm just really heartened by your allyship and your commitment to protect these extremely vulnerable students in our district. So thank you for that.
Yes, we're definitely support measures that reduce bullying within the schools here. But I really wanted to touch on, I thought it was nice, well, the majority of that was great because I feel like we, you know, all of us were coming from a common place where we all see the importance of security, we all see the importance, obviously, of students feeling safe inside of the classroom and there's different avenues to go about that. There's further questions coming on mental health, so I'll save some of my comments for then. But I think it's really about meeting students where they are and making sure that we're providing a safe environment because until we can provide the basics of safety, then students aren't going to be successful in learning. So thank you.
This isn't a pushback, just an honest question about the students not feeling comfortable with reporting bullying, that the means of communication aren't sufficient, the Safe to Tell. I wonder though if it's more that they're uncomfortable reporting because of fear of retribution because we're going to tattle and the bully's just going to come pound me harder. So I think we've all experienced something like that, at least maybe HR at corporate. You know, you want to report something, but you fear Candace is just going to find out, "I told her," and she's going to spit in my food, like same sort of thing. So I think we do need the multi-tiered support structure to address the bullying issue if it persists, escalate and address it completely to protect the victims. Cellphone policy, I think that's another source of a lack of psychological safety if you can't even concentrate in the classroom because your constant distractions of cellphones. Everything we can do with a cellphone are things that we wouldn't allow in a classroom if it were any other form. You can't pass notes, text, you can't play video games. But I do think we should let students keep their phones and that way we're teaching accountability. These are the rules, you can't have your phone out in class, but you can be accountable to keep it in your pocket and focus on the lesson. I'll abstain on the next one.
I just want to clarify, Safe to Tell should still be there. That is an avenue that students are taking advantage of. What the students highlighted is the responses to their reports from Safe to Tell are harsher than they would like for their reporting that they are giving to Safe to Tell. And so when they're talking about the tiered approach to responses to bullying, that also goes into making them more comfortable with telling people when they are experiencing those issues. And so we should keep Safe to Tell, but we should also supply a way for these kids to be able to report in a way that makes them feel comfortable doing so. And also, we should listen to them when they're talking about wanting more restorative practices rather than punishing practices when we're approaching the bullying issue. It's very, I can't recommend more, listening to that April meeting and hearing the kids say it themselves. The care that these kids have, even for those that are doing the bullying, because I think they understand that there's something there that they need help with, is very heartening and it speaks to the level of education that our kids have in the district. That's all I have on that.
I was just going to say, there's all different kinds of bullying that takes place, not just LGBTQ or one of the other forms. We are one of the few Jewish families in Douglas County and all three of my girls have been subject to bullying at school. And kind of hand-in-hand with the bullying, if they're not comfortable with Safe to Tell or a counselor, they came home and told me and of course didn't want me to go to the school and say anything, but I did. And I will tell you that the counselors and the principals handled it like better than I could have ever asked for, as well as Dan and I talking to our girls about how to stand up for it, to stand up for what you believe in. And, you know, there's many different forms of bullying that happen to many different types of kids, not just certain sectors.
So I think on this question, you probably heard a lot of similar themes and I think we all can agree that bullying of any kind is wrong and it can't stand. I think a distinction between the two groups up here is really important on this issue. If Aaron Kane comes to the board and says, "We need more SROs," and there's this new safety procedure, or there's this new safety thing that we need for the district to help our young people be more safe, I'm going to listen. I'm not going to start from an ideological position. I'm going to listen. And if it makes sense, my allegiance will always be to keeping our kids and our educators as safe as possible, even if it means going to the taxpayers and saying, "Hey, we really need this new thing because it's going to make our kids more safe." Thanks.
All right, that concludes a great round of rebuttals and we will then commence on to question round five.
We will begin with Mr. Smith and end with Mrs. Denzler. Question is, what are your plans to improve mental health support in the district and reduce suicides?
Great, this is a very important topic. You know, no matter which point in your life you're at, you're going to have things that stress you out, things that affect you mentally. And it's really important that we give folks options and outlets for them to, you know, kind of clear their head and help with their mental health. Mine happens to be jumping out of planes. There's something about it. Whenever I'm at the door, I can have the worst week ever. I jump, I land, and I feel great. And this campaign's been keeping me from that, so. But I'm still rocking through it. So I think the mental health side of it, I'm going to come at a different angle here because we have to be real careful though that we're not trying to replicate mental health services within the school because that is still a parental rights issue. And so I do believe the schools need to be equipped to deal with acute things that are happening inside of the school and then refer the child and inform the parents of how to get help using county resources and the medical community. When it comes to suicide prevention, I feel so bad for this generation and social media. I'm not trying to blame that for a lot of things, but it's just really unfortunate. I got off social media several years ago because I realized I'm just on here arguing with people and it's mentally draining. I can't imagine with how much it's taken over the lives of young people and just, you know, the extra stressors that it puts on you. And so I think the more that we can do to educate, reduce social media consumption and things of that nature, provide resources to help students and parents are going to benefit the whole child. So thank you.
Of course, I believe mental health supports are important, but we've got to maintain the culture or reinforce a culture of parents as the first partners in all aspects of their child's life, including their mental health. So within a multi-tiered support system, we would want to first start always first tier is partnering with the parent, making them aware of everything that's going on in their child's life. They see them less than a lot of their teachers and I'm sure they'd be happy, a lot of parents would be happy to know what's going on with their kids all day if you had an inside perspective where it's not coming just from, you know, the kid, it might have a different story than the teacher, so it's nice to have that partnership. And then offering supports beyond the parents where appropriate. Sorry, but the parents should maintain the driver's seat. We've got to avoid pathologizing normal adolescent challenges. School is hard, puberty is hard, adolescence is difficult for everybody. It's a wild time and we run the risk of taking minor natural developments or stressors that we go through, through that process and blowing them up into full-blown mental health disorders, creating fragility rather than resilience. So we just make sure that we're more resilient-focused, resiliency-focused in getting through problems through normal coaching and counseling rather than going straight to therapy every time. That might be appropriate for some students, in which case we partner with the parents to get them the right help.
So questions around suicide are very hard for me. My father committed suicide in 2014. I was in the middle of school. I was an undergrad, it wasn't high school, but the fallout from that and the way that I handled it were very unhealthy. Part of the reason is because I didn't know about all of the supports that were available to me. I think the big reason why I don't have my father today is because he didn't take advantage of the supports that were available to him. In order to actually reduce suicides, we need to have robust and multiple supports available to all of our kids. Our kids are asking for peer support networks in their schools. Now, the board, I don't know that we can make that happen, but we can at least set priorities to allow it as an avenue. Our kids need mental health supports in school for when they don't feel like they can go home. I would also share that my father and I did not get along. I would not have gone to him with any of my mental health struggles. There are other kids in our district that do not feel safe going home to their parents with these issues. It's unfortunate, but they exist. And in order to keep those kids alive, we need to make sure that they have mental health support.
Unfortunately, this is a horrible crisis that has clearly affected us all. And growing up, I didn't know one child or hear of a child that committed suicide. And all my kids have a few friends throughout the years that's living in Colorado that they know of and know kids that have committed suicide and they've learned about it way too young. And it's not something that any child should learn how to deal with. We are very lucky in Douglas County, at least we have some of the best mental health professionals in the state. I don't know if you're familiar with Dr. Kelly Smith and her team, but they do amazing work in all of our schools. And in Douglas County, for every student, there are actually 250, or for every 250 students, there's one counselor, which is a, you know, good ratio. Could we continue to improve on that? Definitely. And I do believe, if possible, it's key to partner with families, work with parents because I think if kids know that they have a whole team behind them, not just the parents or the teacher or their friends, and more people that could kind of help support them and raise them up, the better off they'll be. I also do believe with some resiliency training on both kids' parts, but for teachers to know how to work with kids and how to talk to them, that maybe some of this can be mitigated.
I'm so encouraged that you all have asked this question. I think it is so critical and I appreciate the ideas that you all shared at the board meeting in April. I want to read some statistics to you from a book I read this summer called The Anxious Generation. Forty-eight percent of our young people are experiencing feelings of anxiousness. Forty-two percent of our young people are experiencing depression. Twenty percent of high school students have thought about suicide and 10% of those have made an attempt. And according to our county coroner's records this year, the suicide rate for 18-year-olds and under has doubled. We need to focus on ensuring that all of our students feel like school is a place that they belong. And as Tony so often says, we need to make sure that things like sports and extracurricular activities don't become cut points when our budget starts to get tight. We also need to ensure that adults who should know better don't attack some of the most vulnerable young people we have for political gain. All of our young people need to feel safe and belong in our community and that starts at top.
Yeah, to build off of Clark's point, I mean, as a teacher, I didn't get to choose who was in my classroom. I didn't get to choose how I served those students or which students I would teach and which students, you know, didn't agree with me and so I would ignore, like that's not how it works. You serve everybody in your classroom and you care about everyone. You keep everyone in your classroom safe. And that is, if that's what we expect of our teachers who make $51,000 a year, that's the least we can expect of our board members. So I think it is a culture of care that the board needs to instill. Listening to the kids at the youth congress today, they want more marketing actually of the existing resources. We have so many existing resources in this district that some of the kids don't even know about. And so communicating to them all of the existing resources we already have, I think, would make progress. Our students want both academic counselors and social-emotional counselors. They want those people separate. Sometimes those people are doing both academic advising and social-emotional counseling, although I do want to be clear, we do not treat students in schools. We don't offer psychological treatment in schools, that's not the role of a school counselor. And yet, school counselors will, in this district, contact parents before seeing a student one-on-one. Our kids want more professional development for our counselors to address the root causes of behavior issues and not necessarily the behavior issue itself. They pointed to vaping, right? Vaping can become an addiction and so they want more professional development so that counselors are able to help connect students with resources for smoking cessation or, you know, substance abuse. Thanks.
All right, that was a wonderful round of responses from our candidates here. We will go on to our fifth round of rebuttals, following the same order as before, starting with Mr. Smith and ending with Mrs. Denzler.
Awesome, thank you. And I do agree with most of the things that were set up here around, we need to make sure that all students feel welcome and safe inside of our schools. And part of that does involve mental health, but again, just to piggyback off of that, it is a partnership between the school, the parents, and then the parents' circle of networks and the resources that they choose. We definitely need to make things much easier to navigate when it comes to the different resources and the supports that are available to folks, both in the school, within the county, within the state, and within the federal government as well, because there's multiple layers of help that are available to folks and it should not be an isolated thing inside of the schools. Again, that should be a partnership. I had it in my notes, but I didn't get there and so I want to double-tap on this. I agree also with the peer-to-peer network, whoever mentioned that. Um, a hundred percent agree with that because I think, uh, you know, as a young person, you're going to be more comfortable having a conversation with your friends and your friends are going to know a lot about what's going on with you personally. They can notice mood changes. And so peer-to-peer things exist inside of law enforcement, inside of the military, inside of the search and rescue team I volunteer for. So it obviously works and it works in those settings. So move, you know, bringing something like that into the school would just be a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing that, uh, you said a lot of parents don't, uh, sorry, Tony, that a lot of kids aren't comfortable going home to their parents for emotional support. They still need to be their first partner, uh, from the school's perspective because guess what? A lot of disgruntled kids aren't really psyched to go home to talk to their parents about their problems. I think if you've been through adolescence, like we all have, we know sometimes you have irrational grudges with your parents and you say, I'm not telling my dad nothing. That doesn't mean he's a bad parent and he shouldn't be informed of what's happening so he can intervene and care for his child appropriately instead of leaving it to the school to decide what's best for the child. Uh, so, and then intervening without parental involvement is a dangerous slippery slope. I know we currently don't have a policy like that, but of course we're talking about an election for the ability to set policies like that. Just want to clarify those few things. Uh, as far as political attacks on children for political points, I think that's a disgusting accusation and incredibly politicized, uh, attacking us for trying to protect our girls and our parental rights. Calling that an attack on children is unconscionable.
So just to clarify, part of my healing journey from what happened with my father is honestly being able to talk to a lot of people about it, even if it makes them uncomfortable. The reason I was uncomfortable with going home is because my father was an alcoholic and he was abusive. It wasn't that I was an angsty teenager. There are children in our district that are experiencing this and we just lost that data.
There is clearly a lot that falls under a school's umbrella. Um, I believe that mental health is extremely important. However, I also do believe that a school's primary focus is academics and that a school can focus or a school can't alone solve the suicide crisis. Um, but it does take partnering with parents, community, peer-to-peer. Um, it can look a lot of different ways. Um, and most bullying happens, at least how I've seen it, after school, on cell phones, through text messages or Instagram posts. It's not something that happens in front of a teacher usually or during the day at school. It's after school or at night.
So a, a couple of things. I think the, uh, just to make sure we give credit where credit is due, uh, the peer-to-peer counseling came from the students. Uh, again, we need to listen to our students carefully. When one of your major campaign promises targets a specific group of young people, you can't say that you're not targeting that specific group of young people.
Have all candidates had a chance to rebut? Looking all good. All right. We will have time for one more question here. Question number six. Um, I'm going to let my colleague handle that one.
All right. So we will begin with Mr. Gamble and end with Mr. Smith. How will the district ensure each student receives an individualized education that meets their needs?
So we need to maintain targeted grade level achievement as the baseline and implement IEPs and 504s with fidelity aligned to grade level standards. So bring every, everybody up at least to the same level of the grade they're in, if not helping excel, accelerate students that are ready to move beyond grade level, identifying them quickly and helping them get the resources they need to grow, um, if they're outpacing their peers. Um, we, sorry, then we need to teach self-advocacy level, self-advocacy skills at every level, um, which will help the, obviously engage, uh, with their teachers more to tell them where they're at with everything. Um, and then we can employ, uh, multi-tiered monitoring. Uh, we could also leverage AI to, uh, find early indicators of children that are slipping behind by aggregating data and, uh, finding markers of when a child is beginning to slip, being able to retroactively look at the history of their scores, um, certain classes, certain, um, even lessons, absentee patterns. There's all, there's a pattern of data that can all be used to paint a picture of how to identify when a student is beginning to struggle before it becomes a real issue. And I think that's something we can implement as well to make sure that he's getting the targeted, uh, education they deserve.
I think one of the things that we, uh, could improve on as a district, we, we still do very well in this area, is making sure that we identify when our kids need special needs or special education as early as possible. Uh, I went through my entire high school, undergrad and most of my law school career without knowing that I have ADHD. Had I had earlier intervention, I would probably be in a much better place, uh, today in terms of coping strategies that I've developed that are unhealthy. Uh, I approach work in a way that I procrastinate everything until the last second and I cannot get myself to come back to it. But when I got that diagnosis, things changed. I was able to clean my house for the first time, uh, and wanted to. Um, and our kids, as they're going through schools, need that early intervention. They need to know where, uh, their weaknesses lie in terms of learning and they need to have those addressed by teachers. So we need to further our, um, professional development for teachers to make sure they're identifying these as early as possible so that they don't, uh, start forming unhealthy coping strategies to deal with their, uh, mental health, their mental health issues and their learning disabilities. Thank you.
It's super important to meet all kids where they are at. And that is going to look different for every child because some kids need more than others. Um, I think it's imperative that we use assessment tools to kind of figure out where children are at and what can be done for them on their specific plan. Um, and I also think if we figure out what is, you know, if someone has a learning disability or is dyslexic or we can intervene early. And I do believe that the district is starting dyslexia screening with either kindergarten or first grade, um, this fall. And we'll definitely be kindergarten, I believe, next year. Um, because the earlier we can intervene and help those kids, the better. Um, and they will most likely be interested and stay involved in their education if school is easier for them. Um, and I, I think also goes without saying that partnering with parents on this one too is key.
So I want to start, uh, where, uh, where Tony and DeeDee left off. Uh, our youngest daughter, uh, has dyslexia and, uh, she's, uh, in second grade this year and, and we didn't learn about that until this summer. And we read bedtime school stories night after night. Reading scores looked fine, but we knew something was off. And if my wife wasn't a special ed teacher, we probably still wouldn't know. And that's why it's so critical that, uh, all the work that's been done to bring the early screeners around dyslexia is so important. The other thing I want to shift to is listening. I, I may have sounded like a broken record tonight, but I think one of our key responsibilities as board members is to listen. And if we listen to our kids, then we will have the information that we need to ensure that each of them is getting the education that they deserve. Thanks.
So my very first principal told me, um, she said, Kelly, long after the students have forgotten exactly how you worded a lesson or exactly how it looked, they will remember how you made them feel. And I think we would all agree that great teaching and good learning, at the heart of it is relationships. And so for me, this question was really about how does the relationship between the teacher and the student, um, set the student up for success? How can you have an individualized education that meets your needs? I think one of the answers for that is you have a teacher who cares about you and your passions. I really took the time to get to know my students. But I, I mean, French is maybe not everybody's favorite subject, but I knew that I could, you know, ask Eduardo about his soccer game over the weekend and we could integrate it into one of our examples when I was teaching the language. I knew that Manuela, his sister, wanted to become a doctor. And so we would talk about that. I would ask her, you know, what it is that she wanted to do. And we would use the future tense in French to talk about that, right? Relationships are so important. Those are probably terrible examples, but relationships are extremely important. I also think that instructional differentiation is important. And this is work that teachers have been engaged in for 20-plus years, um, but it is continue, a process of continuous improvement. Um, you know, teachers have to account for things like learning differences, neurodivergence, trauma, cultural responsiveness, all in the same class of kids. One thing that helps us differentiate our lesson more effectively is smaller class sizes. And to get to smaller class sizes, what do we need? Say it with me, an MLO. We need to be able to hire more teachers so that we can have smaller class sizes and improve those relationships.
I'm going to take a different path on this one. Individualized education means that we have educational options. That's going to come from neighborhood schools, charter schools, private schools, public schools, online schools, and that we have options for resources inside of the school. Standards are important because if we don't have the same standards, we cannot measure if one is ready to progress from one grade to the other. We cannot measure how somebody is learning. Now, not everybody will learn the same. Some folks are going to need extra help in certain subject areas. Some folks are going to need extra tools available to them. We should make things available, but we should not lower standards for certain groups of people. That is not the answer. We need to make sure we maintain standards, provide choice, partner with parents and have options that students can turn to if they are failing to meet the current standard or having trouble in a certain area. Thank you.
All right. What a wonderful round of responses we have. We're going to go into, um, our rebuttal period here and keep in mind that we are on a tight schedule. Um, we're going to start with our rebuttals now the same order as before, starting with Mr. Gamble and ending with Mr. Smith. All right, perfect. Now that we-
Wait, 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 wait. Sorry, sorry. I just want to clarify, nobody up here is advocating for lowering standards. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Now we can jump into our concluding statements here. Um, that's just going to be our, uh, wrap-up for, uh, the forum for, uh, this evening. Keep in mind that you guys have two minutes for each concluding statement per candidate and that this procedure will follow with the yellow flag being raised 15 seconds before your time is up and the red flag will be raised when your time is up. And I'll gently remind you, your time is up. And then we will proceed. Thank you. We will start with the original order of beginning with Mrs. Parker and then ending with Mrs. Ridwell.
Um, I'm actually Julie Watkins, but I am reading Kerzia Parker's words. Um, I'm not a politician. I'm a mom who reads stories to her kids before bed, a therapist who's seen firsthand what happens when children fall through the cracks, and a neighbor who believes our schools should reflect the very best of who we are. What sets me apart in this race is my real-world experience. I'm the only candidate who has written and been on IEPs and 504 plans and who has sat on threat assessment teams as a mental health professional to keep schools safe. I know what it takes to support students with different needs and to respond when safety is at stake. I listen, I problem solve, and I put students first. Our students and educators don't need more division. They need leaders who will work together to ensure every child feels safe, supported, and ready to succeed. I would be honored to earn your support and your vote for Kerzia Parker for Douglas County School Board. Thank you.
Awesome. Uh, quick reminder, Matt Smith again here. Um, I'll close this off here by, you know, I want to talk a little bit about myself and, and just give a few qualities that I want to leave you with tonight. With me, I don't beat around the bush. You'll always know where I'm coming from. You'll always know where I stand. Um, and I think that's a great quality, um, to have on the school board. I also bring a wealth of experience from different backgrounds and I'm going to be able to represent many aspects of our community due to my diverse background and, and, um, you know, within the government, within private industry as well. And I will lead fairly, but firmly, and make sure that we are making decisions in the best interest of the children and of the citizens of Douglas County. I, I'm also, I'm going to stand tall on my principles and, and I want that to be very clear. I will not back down from focusing on academic excellence. I will not back down from protecting girls' sports in their spaces. I will not back down from protecting parental rights. No matter how things have been spun up here on this stage, I will not back down.
I'm usually a man of few words and that's not really an option with these forums, but, uh, let me ramble on for a couple of minutes here. No, I'll keep it short and sweet. I, I think you've learned enough about all of us tonight and through various forums, uh, if you've attended, uh, to sort of know where we stand and get a good feel of who we are. I care about parents having partnerships with teachers. I think parents are the first line of defense and best partners for teachers to raise the parent's students. Um, and we need to maintain academic excellence with solutions-based, uh, unbiased, goal-oriented, metrics-driven decision-making. Um, and that's what I'll bring.
Once again, I am Tony Ryan. Uh, thank you so much for having us out here and for preparing all of the questions and, uh, running this so very well. Um, the whispered part was I, probably honestly my favorite part of the whole thing. Um, I, I'll just reiterate, uh, the three things that I'm focused on here is responsible use of taxpayer dollars in our district to support students and educators, make sure that we have robust extracurricular opportunities for all of our kids, and making sure that, uh, we have safe and supportive schools for every child in our district. Um, I'll also say that I am willing to have my mind changed. I think it's great to stand on your principles, but when it comes to things that need to be made, the choices that need to be made when talking to experts, when talking to the community, when talking to folks that you disagree with, you need to be able to hear that and change your mind when it is necessary. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for having us tonight. Your questions are great and we appreciate your time. Um, we want to reiterate that since 2021, the board has delivered and we plan to build on that momentum. There's been a five-point gain on CMAS scores. We're number one in the metro district and we have raised teachers' salaries and we, we are becoming a destination for both teachers and families who want other options. Um, we are going to make sure that our kids are prepared to face the real world and to face the future, no matter what path they take. Um, and lastly, just want to remind you to vote for the four of us on November 4th. Gamble, Kramer, Smith, and Vale.
Thank you all. This has been a, a great conversation, uh, tonight. I want to start with something, uh, my mom often says, complacency is the enemy of excellence. And tonight, you've heard a lot about the things that are going really well in Douglas County. And there's a lot to be proud of and we should be proud of those things. But part of leadership is being able to look at the things that are hard to look at, the data points that make you squirm in your seat and form a lump in your throat. I'm not here for the politics. I'm here for the kids. I'm a career educator that listens. I have 20 years of proven results in public education and I'd love to earn your vote in November.
So I'm going to tell you why, um, when you get your ballot, you are going to vote for Kerzia Parker, Tony Ryan, Clark Callahan, and Kelly Denzler. If you believe in academic excellence, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in protecting all students, girls, boys, everything- If you believe in protecting all students, girls, boys, everything in between, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in funding girls' sports, you're going to vote for us. If you believe that parents are important partners in education, and you want some parents on the school board, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in data-driven decision-making, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in elevating student voices, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in the responsible use of taxpayer dollars, you are going to vote for us. If you believe in viewpoint diversity, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in the importance of raising teachers' salaries and recruiting and retaining those teachers, you're going to vote for us. If you believe in making students prepared to face the real world, you are going to vote for us. If you believe in the importance of experience and qualifications, you are going to vote for us. If you believe in the importance of having a clear-eyed look at data and a clear-eyed understanding of the problems we face, you are going to vote for us. So on November 4th, you are going to vote for Keirzia Parker, Tony Ryan, Clark Callahan, and Kelly Densler. Thank you so much.
All right. Okay. Steve just sent me this, so we're going to read it together for the first time. Steve asks first and foremost to say thank you to the students who put this together tonight. It is through your governance that we all got this opportunity to speak, so thank you. It struck me tonight, listening to these candidates, that there really is a fundamental difference between the slates. The union slate has focused on removing parents at every turn and in every answer. The common sense slate has focused on partnering with parents together with teachers to uphold the best outcomes for all students. Thank you again for the opportunity, and remember, on November 4th, that we stand together with Gamble, Kramer, Smith, and Vale.
Can we please give a huge round of applause for these candidates? They spent the better part of their evening here answering questions and giving rebuttals in their busy schedules, so we just want to thank you for coming out tonight, giving us the opportunity to hear your answers. This is about wrap-up time. We're about at 7:53 right now, and we are going to have the candidates in a moment file out to the foyer, where you can engage in more interesting and, I guess, unique and engaging conversation with them on a more personal level. Additionally, I don't know if I neglected to mention this before, but the candidates will have a chance to post their responses to the questions later this evening, if you are not made aware of that. So you will be given this opportunity. Just wanted to make you guys aware of that before we filed out. I think that's all we have for this evening. Thank you, guys, for coming on this Monday night. We were glad to have you as the student advisory group here. Let's just give a round of applause for us all.